Okay, we're gonna get started. Mrs. Durkusch, Dr. Roll, call of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger. Mrs. David. Mrs. Di Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Ms. Greenstein.
Here.
Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Mr. Stoloff. Mrs. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Seven present, two absent. Student Board Representatives. Jenna Berman.
Here.
Joel B. Ordeman.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the pluggible agents. Pluggible agents, flag. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 4th, 2019 Public Meeting of the Wissickin School District's Board of Directors. The voting meeting in which we will formally vote on items reviewed at last week's work session. And with that, we'll go to item two on our agenda, which is a list of public meetings since last time. We'll get a recap of the budget workshop later in our agenda. Item three is a list of public meetings coming up this month. And I want to highlight the Phillies meeting on February 11th will be in the auditorium as opposed to our normal spot here. And item actually, February 11th, 2019 PLC Committee meeting has actually been canceled. Calendars. And also want to make a special note that our next budget meeting is going to be scheduled on February 19th. Or we'll talk a little bit more in depth about the budget development process for. And with that, I'll hand things off to Jim, who will introduce our presentation.
Okay, thank you. We have two presentations. Either first is a fun one from J.D. Grove Elementary School. I see some smiley-faced guests, including a bowtie effort. That is raising the standards around here beyond anything there has ever been. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Toby Albanese, who will introduce his team and his group.
Thank you, Dr. Chrisfield. Thank you, members of the board and community present. Really appreciate you guys taking some time from these busy meetings to focus on some of the really interesting, cool things that are happening in our schools. Behind me, as Dr. Chrisfield said, is a fun group of kids. We have about 100 students in 4th grade. I'd like to have all of them up here and sharing what they're doing and fantastic work that they've been getting done. So you'll get to meet them in a second. I'll keep this super brief. But also making recognition and appreciating the work of the educators, the teachers in the building that have worked so hard. And there's two of us, two of them with us here today, who have decided to tackle something that's very, very difficult, trying to make eight, nine, and 10-year-olds love writing. And trying to get that process as coherent and clear and fun and productive as possible. So a huge thank you to Lindsay Gamboa and Leesel Madden Tonight, who have, from the beginning of the year, decided to get together with the 4th grade team that you see pictured and really tackle writing in a fun and creative way to help all of our young learners become better writers. So you'll, I'll stop talking now and we'll hand it over to them. Leesel, Lindsay?
Actually, we probably can bring it to the microphone. Take it out, okay. I don't want to break it. I got it. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So ahead you see the 4th grade team, the teachers that aren't with us right now, are with us within spirit, in spirit, because we work really well together as a team. So Lindsay, Lindsay Gamboa is special ed, I'm regular ed. And we love the co-teaching model because together we are looking at text-dependent analysis. So when Dr. Albanese is talking about writing, we're really talking about analytically writing about our reading. And across the state, we saw the data showed that only 12% of the students were proficient or advanced. And we thought, what could we do differently with our instruction to help all of our learners reach these incredibly high expectations? So I'm not going to read this to you, but you can read up here and see some of the things that we've been doing. Our team often meets on Fridays and Friday afternoons. And we talk about the text-dependent analysis questions. We talk, we look at student work samples. We, we talk with the kids about what they understand and how we can change things up, how we can change our questions. We've created our own rubrics based on the state. And we have scored student work. We've done a lot of reflecting. And having Lindsay in the classroom is fantastic for me because she sees things that I don't see. And then she helps us change our instruction to meet the needs for all of our students. So now I'm going to show you, or Lindsay's going to talk a little bit about the text-dependent analysis and what kids are expected to know in 4th grade. And this is their first time doing this. So this is pretty amazing. Sometimes I think, these kids are ready for college. And I tell them that all the time. So I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay and let her tell you about what they're, what they're doing.
Hi, good evening. You'll see up here, as Leesel stated, these are all of the things that the 4th graders are expected to know. When they're tackling TDA questions, they will see things such as the literary elements that are listed. They need to be familiar with the author's craft, as well as nonfiction text structure and what goes into that, as well as all of the genres. With that, the TDA is going to give them things to think about and write about. And they're not only going to have to do one, but two. So for example, last week during writing, we were talking about how the author's word choice in the essay, or in the writing selection, showed his point of view.
So one of the things that we've decided to do as a team is change our approach to how we model shared reading and thinking aloud about our reading. And our nov is going to talk to you about how we learn to annotate text.
Ms. Madden and Ms. Gamboa have been pushing us to think about the TDA questions and what we have to do through those questions, like what we have to think about. And she came, Ms. Madden and Ms. Gamboa came up with some tech, like sentence starters to help us push our thinking and help us come up with great notes. So some of them are, I can visualize. This is giving me the idea that this connects with. And they helped us come up with notes to help us like think about all the text and what's going on. And I came up with a metaphor. What's going on in the story slower than the rest? And it's how the character Leo is struggling in school. And here's what the metaphor is. So Leo equals like all the animals which can't escape the forest fires that are going on in the story. And then the forest fires like are equivalent to what Leo can't understand and keep up with. Yeah.
Thank you, our nov. You did great. Another thing that we decided to change was our approach to teaching guided reading. We're changing the kinds of questions that we're asking. So Sarah's going to show you a little bit about our guided reading notes from last week.
So last week, we talked about text structure, where we learned about firsthand account and secondhand account. So like secondhand, firsthand account is like when you were there and you saw it. And secondhand account is like you read it in a book or someone told you. And then we learn about word choice. So what, we read the book Nellie Bly. And the word choice is what the author thinks about Nellie Bly. And the author used the words brave and daring, which shows like Nellie Bly is a risk taker. And we also talked about the theme. The theme is like the moral of the story. So the moral of the story in this story is like women can do what men do.
Well said, Sarah. Okay, and now I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay, who's going to talk about our rubrics.
In the classroom, we often encourage the students to work with a growth mindset, believing that they can always improve and change their work. So with this, we had the rubric and we had the students write their first draft. We then conference with the students and use OneNote to provide feedback for them. And once they received their first score, they were then able to go into the OneNote, look at our comments, conference with us, and then received an improved score. Charlotte's going to show you how that helped her.
My first draft was made from my own writing. And then my second draft, I used the teacup analogy. And I made and improved my writing. And I also used teacher feedback that usually comes on the side. An example is when they said, Ms. Madden said to be more clear about how Charlie, the total, was a role model for Leo in the end. And then I, when after I improved, I saw how my scores really went up and how I felt more confident for the next one.
Tyler's going to talk about how we changed our approach to shared writing and partner collaborative conversations.
How are we working together? Well, we have, so if we're stuck on like the text says and we don't know what to say. A partner would give us suggestions and more like that. Like here's, after I said text says, Reese thought that, that he could use flash photography to show what the slums were really like back in that day. So there's a reason why we need partners' help. And what really is good about it helps us find the cup tea bag aroma. All the graphic organizers shows us where to write the things. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to show you what a text-dependent analysis for a 4th grader, a question, looks like. And our nov is going to explain how we act like detectives and decode what these questions really mean. Now you can see these college-level questions the 4th graders are answering.
When Format and comes across a really hard TDA question and they can't figure out what to do, our teachers came up with three criteria which help us break down the question and figure out how to solve it. So the first criteria is no, meaning like what is it asking you to think about? Like what info do you need from the text? And then due to is like what elements in the question? And like what they're telling you to do? And then use is like finding evidence in the story for what helps support your answer.
Okay. This is one of my crazy harebrained ideas, and I'm sure all the parents in Format and will say, this teacher's a little nutty. But as we really struggled to help the kids find some kind of an anchor or a metaphor or analogy to understand what they were being asked to do, we thought of the teacup analogy. And the kids are going to explain how making a cup of tea relates to writing a body paragraph about a text-dependent analysis question. And Rachel's going to tell us about that, and Austin.
The cup stands for your point. And the teabag stands for your text evidence. But you can't just have the teabag text evidence.
And the hot water represents your brain thinking. And the aroma is your last thing. It represents the analysis. Like this shows that because or why does it matter? Why does this matter? Or why is this important?
Now the 4th graders are going to come around and show off some of their writing that they've used with this analogy. What you should be looking for, as Austin and Sarah explained, is the teacup was for the point. So with this, the students are given both a visual and a written, a visual and a written scaffold for them to write, to use when they are writing. So again, you'll see the teacup that we've drawn to make the point. The teabag is the students giving their text evidence. And they use the sentence starters, the scaffold that we had there to fill in the blank. For example, the author wrote, or the text says. And then the students would pour the water on, or their brain power to then release the aroma or the analysis.
And now to help you remember the teacup analogy, our students would like to make you a cup of tea. So some of you have, we were told there were nine board members, so we, I miscounted and only brought, I think actually 11 cups. I thought I had extras. But the kids are going to come around and offer you some teabag text evidence. We're not going to let them pour hot water for you. Don't worry, Mrs. Gamboa and I will do that. But some of you have teacups on your desk or in front of you, and it has the little teacup analogy on the other side. So we are going to, go ahead, kids, go offer them the tea. Say, what kind would you like? So yeah, then push. All right, then you can get one side.
If we can make any kind of comment why the kids are doing this.
We would love to have comments or questions.
I'm absolutely blown out by this, as a former English teacher especially. But to see kids of this age, I worked in the high school level, who are learning these critical thinking skills that are so integral to becoming good writers and becoming good students and learning to understand what they're learning. So I'm just amazed that you guys are doing all of this already at such a young grade level. And I think it's fantastic. You have great teachers and a great principal, and you're all working really hard.
I did have, I had one question too. When you guys came around with your sheets, did you all, did you type on there? And then you printed out your own thoughts of? That's called speed typing. I think you guys did a great job, and I just wanted to congratulate you. Oh, for 4th graders, you came up here and, and like your teacher said, you guys sound like college students already. I'm glad we're getting you prepared for that. You guys, great job. Now, it's a little difficult because we're all crazy adults.
Okay, I have something to say too. As a former 4th grade teacher, right here in Wissickin, you are the most amazing 4th graders I have ever seen. I cannot believe that you know what you know. It's astounding. And your teachers are wonderful for really putting all this in. You're doing such a great job.
Hi, and I was a high school teacher. And one of the things I was constantly doing is trying to encourage my students to write. And if they had a program like you guys have gone through, I wouldn't have had to work so hard. Fantastic. I'm really impressed by the work you've done, kids, guys.
Yeah, I had heard of text-dependent analysis. Didn't know much about it. I just heard it was some shift that they had made at the state level that was a lot more difficult and a higher level of rigor. But I had no idea like how difficult it actually was until I saw you guys talking through and helped me understand what it's about. And made me even more amazed that we have 4th graders who could do it at that level. You guys did a fantastic job. So thanks. How about a round of applause for everybody? All right, thanks, guys.
Normally, I feel like I'm the one who has the tough act to follow. But I'm happy to say that tonight Joel and Jenna do. So don't feel any pressure. And you can stay at your seats if you like to give your presentation and.
First, I want to echo how impressed I am with the kids and teachers from Shady Grove. I'm honestly blown away by what you guys are doing. It's, it's very impressive. And it shows like the progress that our school district is making and the efforts that the teachers are putting in. So thank you. First of all, just with some school spirit news at the high school. We've had our first spring or January pep rally. We normally just have one in the fall for the homecoming game. But this year, we decided to hype up the Silent Night basketball game. And the Philly Fanatic showed up to the pep rally and got in a free throw contest, as well as a push-up contest with the Wissickin Trojan. And I'd like to say that the Philly Fanatic unfortunately beat the Trojan, but everyone was very entertained. The Silent Night basketball game was, again, a success this year. Everyone, the stands were packed with students with all kinds of creative costumes. And you'll never see one of those repeated again. Everyone comes with a brand-new one each year. Moving on to another event that's coming up is we have the semi-formal. It's the La La Land theme, that movie from 2016 with Ryan Gosling and Emma Stone. Sure that the decorations are going to be awesome and everyone's going to come dressed in their best. Next, we also have the flower sale coming up for Valentine's Day. This is a tradition at Wissickin, and you can send as many flowers as you want anonymously with funny notes or to your best friends or people you, you know, want to send a flower to. Lastly, with that, along with the flower theme, we had three students, Ryan Cleary, Abby Diaminico, and Bethany DiLaurentis, go to the Rose Bowl Parade and play in the marching band in Pasadena, California. And it's a huge accomplishment for them and we're really proud of them, especially in the music department.
So I'm sure as many of you know, this month is Black History Month. And what the 10th grade and 11th grade curriculum entails is students research someone who might not be mentioned in the textbooks, and then they present it to their class. And at the high school, the engineering students gave it forward, going to the Lower Gwinnett Elementary School District, programming a one-handed keyboard for students who might be disabled. And the Wiss Pals, which is a club at the high school, works with special needs students, made holiday crafts more towards the beginning of the month for the new year. And that's all for January.
Thanks. There's always a lot of great things happening at the high school. And hey, Shady Grove team, thanks for stopping in again. You don't have to feel obligated to stick around for the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming. Okay, and so now we're at the first of two public comment periods on our agenda. One's for comments on agenda items only. And we don't have any registered speakers, so we'll skip that and move on to report of the board president. And I have nothing new since last week. Then next up, we'll get to the report of the superintendent, Jim.
I also have nothing new except to note that on the voting item, there's one version of the school calendar for 2019 to 20, as we discussed at last meeting.
So last week, we had our two other board, student board reps here. And Jenna and Joel, you guys didn't get a chance, I think, to weigh in on the discussion of the school calendar. Essentially what we're voting on, and what we had discussed last week, was whether or not to have a school calendar with school year starting before Labor Day or after Labor Day. There was some discussion that because Labor Day this year is on September 2nd, which is relatively early, that maybe we should consider having the school year start after Labor Day for other folks who felt that we should keep it for Labor Day. As a student, from your perspective, what's your opinion on the topic?
For the athletics, I know there was some talk a couple of meetings ago about how the plan for the fall sports won't change due to delay. So I think that starting, there wouldn't really have an impact with vacation time since. So if acting time that students have to stay or not stay at the end of the year, I think, in my opinion.
I'm sure if you ask like a majority of students, they would, they would mostly likely say start after Labor Day. But I know that Swash brought up a good point about how this year or this upcoming year lines up. I don't know exactly with like the date, whatever, with the weekend lines up best, which I feel like if we were to predict or like look ahead to these, we can plan for certain years to be after Labor Day. And the ones where there's a long gap of time between the first day and going back to school, then plan around that. But I feel like it has to do with more of that situation and else.
So we had a little bit of discussion about this last week and trying to decide which one we wanted to put forward for a vote day. And based on the sentiment last week, it seemed like a majority of the board members were in favor of school calendar, which had the first day of school before Labor Day. It was August 20th. So that's what's before us and what we'll officially vote on later in the agenda. But when we get to that, I'll pull that aside as a standalone item that we'll vote on. Okay? Else, Jim? All right, and with that, we'll move on to the report of the assistant superintendent, Gary.
Thank you. So this evening, just a quick mention of February 15th is our next professional day, Professional Development Day in the district. And I just want to point out that there's a tradition we have had in our district to dedicate half of that professional day, the morning, for colleague-to-colleague teaching. So this is an opportunity for teachers in the district and administrators to run sessions on particular best practices that are evident in their own classrooms or in their own practice, or expertise they bring to the district. And it's our chance to share with one another the expertise that's within our team. So it's, it's an exciting day. It's always received very well. Last year, we used something called an EdCamp format, which was much more informal and more facilitation of conversations among faculty on different topics. This year, we return for a formal workshop presentation. And many of our teachers have either teamed up with an administrator or two teachers or two administrators to deliver workshops of interest and of their particular expertise. So very well received. We have about 75 presenters and over 40 sessions running in the morning. We're looking forward to that.
Great. Report of the solicitor, Michelle.
Thank you. I have one new item add for voting. Item 15C.
And that is a settlement agreement.
Correct.
Next then is the report of the board secretary, Wade.
There are no changes. It is the January work session and board meeting minutes.
And treasurer?
Is the December treasurer's report. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to board committee reports. First up, communications. Ronnie, anything new since last week?
No, nothing new since last week. Our next meeting is very 20th at 7 o'clock.
Okay, and curriculum and technology, Ron? Just since last week?
Yes, nothing new from last week beyond the items in 15, which is the rip and the wishing contract.
Thanks. Oh, Ronnie, no, you had mentioned a meeting on February 20th. Is that a communications meeting that you were referencing? Okay. All right. There's no communications. Okay, next is facilities and transportation, Tracy?
Yes. So we had talked last week about the transportation services. And up for a vote is contract with first for a five-year term. for a five-year term.
Anyone have any additional questions about the first student contract? Okay. Then we'll move on to the finance committee. David?
Thank you, Joe. We had a uh, budget workshop last Thursday, January 31st. Mr. Coleman and Dr. Chrisfield reviewed the budget in its current state, uh, which uh, i- i- is a preliminary form that we're starting with. Has about a $470,000 deficit, assuming an adoption of a tax increase of Act 1 plus exceptions. There was much discussion on possible new items that are included in the budget at the moment, which are, there's a request for a new scoreboard in the gym at the high school. Additional walking trail at the Blue Bell Elementary. A curriculum and instructional coordinator to join the uh, staff here at Central Office, I believe. And then a $200,000 reserve for uh, facilities, master plan debt service capacity that we're trying to include in the budget to grow our debt capacity. We learned that we're potentially uh, gonna be faced with an additional $410,000 in uh, teacher salaries, depending on how growth projections play out. We could be adding up to five new classrooms. And some of the known or potential saving, reduction, savings or reductions that, that we discussed included uh, elimination of the software support position at Central Office due to retirement. The transportation contract savings that we're gonna be voting on tonight, I think. Savings uh, from our contribution that we give to North Monco Technical Career Center based on the formula that's derived from the number of students that we send as a proportion of the whole. And savings from the AP exam costs that um, that are gonna result from fewer exams being paid by the high school, as has been discussed previously. And let's see. Finally, the discussion turned to staffing at Central Office and it was pointed out, uh, we were provided with a summary of, of staff members over the, and over the last 10 years. It was shown that uh, there's been a 23% overall reduction in staffing here in the Central Office, which I think is remarkable uh, that we've grown into that point and still maintained excellence uh, as we have. Uh, so um, I think that's all, uh, pretty much summarizes everything that was covered and we'll be meeting again uh, at the next workshop, as you pointed out, February 19th at 6:30. Dr. Chrisfield, Wade, please correct any mistakes I just made.
Um, David or Wade, is there a particular theme or focus of the next budget workshop that's coming up?
Uh, capital, debt, and facility-type ramifications of um, a budget.
Sounds exciting.
Yes.
I was only half joking. So uh, board members, item 15I1 is the approval of our preliminary budget. And that's what David was referencing. Essence, um, the way the state has their timeline, we have to submit a preliminary budget to the state. Uh, but it's really just a preliminary budget, truly preliminary, meaning that is not where we expect to end up, sort of a starting point as a lead into the series of budget meetings that we're gonna be having several months. And as David alluded to, we have a lot of possible things to consider in terms of uh, us to take on, but also possible reductions or efficiencies to um, put into place that I'm hoping that we end up at a balanced budget, not having a deficit and also somewhere south of a Act 1 index. Great. Gonna take a lot of, probably a discussion and work yet from here to there several months. But uh, all we're voting on tonight is, again, a preliminary budget. It's just that's a starting. Questions? David or Wade?
Uh, I just wanna point out to pull out I4. Vote separately.
That's right. Okay, um, moving on to policy. Carol, last week?
No, nothing new since last week. I have no informational items and no voting items tonight. And I just want to say again that the February 11th policy meeting is canceled.
Okay. Personnel director, Kathy?
Any additions to last week's discussed items have been highlighted for the board's reference?
Okay. And uh, report of board representatives. We gave those reports last week. So we'll move on to item 15, board voting item. So I'm gonna start off with item 15B1 and calling for a motion for that separately. Calendar?
So moved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Comments? Have a roll call?
Mr. Badger?
Vote in favor.
Mrs. DiPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Greenstein? Mrs. Hayman?
Yes.
Mr. Stoloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
No.
Six yes, two no.
Motion passes. Okay, next, I'm gonna take a bunch of these, um, a group. So I'm looking for a motion for items 15B2 through 15K5, with the exception of 15I4, list of payment.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Yeah, comments? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Passes? And then finally, we have item 15I4, payment.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Comments?
Yes, I will be abstaining from this vote. Uh, I, with one of the vendors, I will submit this abstention in writing.
Noted. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're at the second of the comment period. And again, no speakers registered. Weird. Okay, so now we're at board comments. Comments from my fellow board members?
I did, oh, sorry. Um, I did want to um, ask Dr. Chrisfield at next meeting if maybe we could have a list of some of the, that are being done throughout the school for Black history. Every school does some. Pretty neat happenings. Thanks.
I just had a quick question about the listing of the holidays for the calendar for next year. The Jewish holidays are not noted as holidays on, on the list of holidays? I just wasn't sure why that would be. Oversight?
Um, where, where are you looking on the, for 12-month employees?
Yeah. The, the calendar. It's just for the full-time employees. Um, that's our uh, list of, of approved holidays. That's all that is. The schools actually are, though, closed on the Jewish holidays.
12-month?
And the teachers are off.
12-month people have the option of taking a day off.
Correct, yes, they can use personal time. It is not an automatic holiday, correct?
Other comments? Okay, uh, then can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye? Can you adjourn?